Good evening to you all and welcome to our first meeting in the month of March. Perhaps some of our people who ordinarily attend forgot that we were starting our meeting and all of our meetings now will start at six o'clock, whether they are regular meetings or work sessions. So tonight was our sort of our first official meeting at six o'clock, I guess. And so thank you, council, for all being here and being present, for remembering the time. So with that said, I'm going to ask our town clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Marshburn?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Here.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Here. And we're all here and thank you so very much. So I'm going to have the honor of calling on Mr. Dellinger, who will lead us tonight in our pledge of allegiance and also in the invocation. Mr. Dellinger.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I be seated?
If you wish. Thank you, Lord, for this opportunity for all of us to serve this town we love so much. Please give us the wisdom of your guidance and please protect all those in our town and outside of our town and be with those who are suffering all over the world, but particularly around us. In his name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. So, all right, we'll jump right into the agenda and move right along. So the first item of business is petitions and comments. Ms. Town Clerk, did we have anybody sign up tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And not seeing any one in the audience that I think would fit the description of someone who wants to petition the council, I'm not going to take time to read the petitions and comments segment. So we'll move to item E, which is adoption of agenda. Counsel, you have the agenda before you. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. So all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No, and is so ordered. Okay. Likewise, there are no presentations this evening that I'm aware of. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right, council, there are, I believe I counted, six items on the consent agenda. And so unless anybody needs to pull an item, and I just wanted to make a quick comment of one of the items on there. I'm pleased to see that we continue to receive some grant funds and I want to thank the parks director and anybody else who've been involved with that, but it's always nice to see and maybe others in the mill, I'm not sure. But thank you for your efforts and that's on the consent item tonight, council. So if you're ready, I'll entertain a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
It's moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Vance, motion, and Mr. Matthews, seconded. All in favor, vote aye, please?
Aye.
And no, and there is no opposition. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move to item H, which is a public hearing segment, and there are two of those this evening. Both of those have to do with annexation. So these will be handled slightly different, but if there's anybody here from the public who wishes to comment, we'll recognize them. So I'm going to recognize Mr. Bowie for item one under public hearings. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight I will be presenting Creech Road Annexation, Annexation 22-19. General case information, property is owned by Harold Thomas. Property is located at 1102 and 1104 Creech Road. The tract size is .93 acres. This petition follows a request for public water at 1102 and 1104 Creech Road, single family, per the Raleigh-Garner merger agreement. Annexation is required for the extension of service and the recommendation is to adopt the annexation ordinance. And we have an aerial of the site location. And that concludes this presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowie. Counsel, any questions on this issue at all? Hearing none and seeing no members of the public in the audience, I believe it's proper to call for a vote on this order. So, council, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, a move that we adopt, annex ordinance 2023-5186.
Second.
Okay, thank you for the motion and the second. If you're in favor, do anybody need to ask any other comments, questions on the issue? Okay.
Aye.
Okay, hearing none. If you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed, no, and the motion is carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Bowie, you are still up on the second item.
Yes, sir. The second annexation hearing is for 2195 Clifford Road, Annexation 22-20. The property is owned by Paul Blackwell, is located at 2195 Clifford Road, and the tract size is .97 acres. This petition follows a request for public water and sewer at 2195 Clifford Road, single family, per the Raleigh-Garner merger agreement, and annexation petition is required for the extension of service and the recommendation is that you adopt annexation ordinance.
Okay, question for Mr. Bowie, your comments, council? Anybody? Okay, hearing none. A motion is in order on this issue.
I move the adoption of an annexation ordinance 2023-5187.
Okay.
Okay, motion made and properly seconded. Any questions, comments, council? No one in the public? Okay, if you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition, no, and there is none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Okay. We will now go to the one item we have under new and old business, zoning text amendment. And Mr. Bowie, no, excuse me, Mr. Trezenberg, you are handling that matter, I see. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is the public notice requirement text amendment coming back to you for consideration for final adoption. Just again, to recap, the final revisions were to adopt an 800-foot notification radius. That is included in subsection one of 446C. And then second, to require, continue to require notice to property owners and occupants, both of individually platted dwelling units and of multi-dwelling unit properties. That is subsection two of that same section. And finally, to require the applicant to supply postage-paid envelopes to staff for the mailing of the public hearing notice. That is a new subsection six of 446C as well. The consistency statement adopted by the planning commission was that the planning commission finds that although primarily mentioned in the context of promoting commercial development, the plan does discuss the guiding principle of aligning the development code with our desired ends, and that whether through consensus or majority opinion, the successful adoption of a revised regulation may be understood to represent the fulfillment of that principle. And so tonight, in addition to that consistency statement, you're also asked to look at the reasonableness related to the plan and its guidance within it, as well as other plans. And our staff recommendation is that we have no objection to the final revised proposal as detailed in section three of your staff report and recommend that town council approve the planning commission's statement of consistency in section four. And then there is a motion to find it either consistent or reasonable, or consistent but not reasonable. And if you have any additional questions, I'll be glad to try and answer those.
Okay, thanks so much, Mr. Trezenberg, for your report. Counsel, he's laid it out very well, I think, and he has the information for you. So does anybody have any questions for Mr. Trezenberg at this time? On my left, anybody? None? Okay, to my right?
Yes.
All right, hearing none, then a motion is in order.
Mayor, I move the town council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in section four of the staff report as their own. Further move that the town council adopt ordinance 2023-5188 approving rezoning ZTA 2202 as the request is reasonable in the public interest because it will likely align the development code with the town's desired ends.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton, and for the second, by Mayor Pro Tim Vance. Counsel, you heard the motion. Anybody have a question or comment? Hearing none. Are you ready to vote? So if you are, I'll entertain a motion.
You can call for the vote.
Excuse me, you're right. I'm sorry.
I'd be glad to make a motion again. If you'd like, we can do it twice, make sure we get it right.
Yeah, no, I think it's right enough. Thank you. So if you're in favor of the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And if you're opposed, no?
No.
Okay. Motion passes on a vote of four to one. So, so ordered. Okay, that was the only item on new and old business. Thank you, Mr. Trezenberg. We will now go to item J, which is committee reports. I'm not aware of any, but council members, any committees met that you need to report on? Okay, none. Many times HR is met, so we're good.
Not at this time.
Okay, all right. All right, I'm going to go to manager reports and recognize our town manager at this time.
All right, thank you, mayor, town council. First want to report that there's going to be an open house at the nature center on Thursday, March the ninth, from 4:30 to 6:30 to discuss the town's draft pedestrian plan. So folks can come in and drop in and learn about the plan and then give their input on the plan. The second thing I'd like to mention is that starting March the 20th, our solid waste unprepared pickup for the spring will start and we ask that residents get their items out to the curb at a timely manner. Crews, they're eventually just going to make a pass around each neighborhood over the course of a few weeks. For this pickup, yard waste does not have to be bagged or bundled, and the usual size specifications for weekly pickup do not apply. We ask that residents please separate items by three categories: yard waste, bulky waste items, and mattresses. For mattresses, residents should contact Public Works about pickup and Public Works can be reached at 919-772-7600 or email the public works service desk at garnernc.gov. And that's it, unless there's any questions.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. Questions for the town manager, council? Anyone? All right. Thank you, sir, for that report. And so, does our attorney have any reports tonight? I believe she said she did not.
No report this evening.
Okay. I told her today that I appreciate the way she's been tracking some of the legislative bills and she's, I think, doing a good job of keeping us informed. And of course, she's certainly in touch with directors in our town on information that might affect their department. So thank you very much. All right, we are all ready to council reports at about 16 after 6:00. So I don't want to jinx this, so let me start down here with Mr. Matthews. You have anything, Mr. Matthews?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Okay. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, I'd like to mention something, Mr. Mayor, that I think many on here are aware of, but one of our colleagues, Mr. Elmo Vance, officially got retired last week from the state of North Carolina on March the 1st, I believe.
Yes, sir.
And so I want to mention Mr. Vance's first. He's serviced our country, he's using the service, also serviced the state of North Carolina, and we appreciate it. And now that you have some free time on your hands, Mr. Mayor, the Mayor Pro Tim has free time on your hands, that means you can do things and he'll fill in. Remember that now?
Yes, yes.
Take advantage because he just, he just retired, so he's still in the working mood.
Councilman Singleton, I'm sorry, but my wife has already beat the mayor to it.
Okay. At least you got your fur on your sleeve, you man. Just want to mention that so folks know that you've served our country and our state well for many years.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton, so much, and I recognize him. And by the way, yeah, I have, I'm going to be gone some fairly soon and I know there's at least one manner that I've already asked him to fill in for me on. So he didn't say no, so that's a good sign.
Well, he did not.
Yeah, right. Thanks, sir. Okay, I'll defer to others and come back around. So, Ms. Behringer, what's your reports?
A couple of things. I want to thank whoever picked up the broken tree limbs on Eversboro Road across from the parking lot entrance into town hall. They were there and unsightly for months and months and months and months, and now they're gone and it looks so much better over there. So thanks to whoever did that. And over dinner tonight, we were having a conversation about, it's been winter time for all the winter, temperatures going up and down, and suddenly we have to mow our yards. And there's a median at 50, Highway 50 and Garner, West Garner Road, that is overgrown, that needs mowing. And there's also an area there at the corner of, I don't know if we call it webs anymore, not, but the corner of 50 and Garner Road, that also is overgrown and needs trimming back. And that's all.
Okay, so noted. Thank you. Mr. Dellinger, be happy to recognize you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had an item in the consent agenda about the social district, so just want to remind everyone, we adopted our social district downtown starting March 1st. I wanted to thank our downtown development manager, Shaila Douglas, for all her hard work and the town attorney as well for jumping through all those hoops, and our board, Ms. Behringer's on that board, and Public Works as well for getting the signs up day of, and also Graphics House, which designed the soundings down there. A lot of feedback from a lot of people. They got something that was really manageable and looks really great. So just a reminder on that. Friday, the Optimist Club has their barbecue. It's drive-through only, pork only, and it's 11 to 7:00. The other issue is, there was an email last week, I think most of us were on and about the loud exhausts and mufflers, and I was wondering, I looked at the, our town ordinances under section 1115, there's a section A, which is broad, that would seem to cover it, and there's also some specific ones under section B, B3 and B4, I think, already sort of addressed that. So I don't know if there's something we can do on the enforcement side, and particularly the ones that sound like gunshots.
Yeah, on over here lives.
We have a lot of veterans in the community and thus, there's a lot of issues with that. And there's one thing between a loud muffler and there's another, it sounds like somebody's doing a drive-by through town. So I don't know, I guess that's police department conversation or, I don't know, I just think we need to address that. It's getting a little, it's getting worse and worse.
And let me just mention, yeah, I've had some conversation with our attorney. In fact, I sent her an email and she's, she's sent a response. Yeah, I don't, maybe it hasn't gotten to the council yet, but it will be coming right in regards to noise ordinance or things related. And, you know, it's, as you might would imagine, it's not as easy to figure out the best way to try to enforce that. Police department has been made aware of this and so read the information. I don't believe the council has it yet, do they, Ms. Jones?
No, and Deputy Police Chief had responded also.
Right.
I can forward that to everyone. There is some concerns with the former police chief, Benz. I had talked to him about when noise complaints came up and he had some concerns on previous cases going to court, that because the ordinance has a subjective standard, it's loud and unreasonable as opposed to a decibel level, that hit at least one case that he said where the judge would not uphold the violation. So I wanted to wait for the police chief to be back to see if we wanted to recommend any, you know, ordinance amendments. But you are correct, that those are the sections that I outlined that might be applicable to these types of complaints. But it's also difficult to catch the violator in the act sometimes with, you know, vehicles which are traveling through town. It might be a little different if it's in a neighborhood where they can identify where the vehicle is typically housed. But I will go ahead and forward what I had sent and Deputy Police Chief's response as well.
Okay.
They did suggest that people call 911 and report it and if, you know, they can get someone out, they would respond.
I have a local sleuth who has timed certain vehicles and when they come through at very specific times of day and has license plate numbers, but I could send that on. But thank you so much.
Okay, and we will talk some more with our police chief just to get her response and reaction and any recommendation that she has for her and the department. Okay, anything else? Okay, Mr. Vance?
Yes, I just want to say, give a public, congratulations to Mr. Tim Stevens for receiving the order of the longleaf pine on last week. Well-deserving individuals who've done a great, a great service to the town in various areas, from plays to the wall that heals and other activities that he's been engaged in. And congratulations to Mr. Tim Stevens. The next for the employee appreciation gathering that was held on last week, it was, it was a pleasure to be a part of that and to see all the hardworking employees of the town, those who could make it. And we also know that there were those who couldn't make it because they had to, they had to man their positions. Ms. Stella, we know that you were even working to get the agenda out, so you were not able to be there. I just want to say for those who weren't there, your service is definitely appreciated in keeping the town running. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I did, I'm sorry, I did mention one thing that's really important to, I think, to council and everybody that lives in Garner. You know, we always have exciting things coming to Garner, a lot of firsts, and we had the infamous white deer, which we all well remember, and will live in infamy. And now across from Lake Benson Park, we're the proud owners of the only alpacas in my knowledge in Wake County. The buffalo farm out there, I came through it a while ago, I knew they were coming, they're out there now, right across from the entrance of Lake Benson. And I think they're going to wind up making available people to look at, but they're out there in the corral. So I just want to put the word out on that because we really needed to know. So now we know. And that's all I had, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Sure enough. So, okay, well, thank you, council. I'll mention just a couple of things. Mr. Vance stole my thunder about the awards ceremony, but I would just echo what he said. I want to thank Rodney and all the town staff for pulling that together and doing a good recognition service. The food and the fellowship was good and we recognized any number of folks there that day. And but people like Ms. Gibson and others were manning their stations and weren't able to be there. But we thought about you and appreciate the good work that you do, for sure. I also want to mention that, you know, for some time when COVID was amongst our midst, the G-PAC basically wasn't operating or that we weren't having live shows. And as most of you, I think, know, we have started resuming those. And more recently, we had the Garner Showcase of Talent and I always enjoyed that and was able to go and hear some of our local performers perform there. But coming up on the 25th of March is a group called Balsam Range. They've been with us before. They won some Bluegrass Awards, I believe. And it just so happens that they have a guy in their band. I don't know many people who are in bands, but they're banjo players, a guy I knew in college years ago. So looking forward to seeing Mark Pruitt again. Maybe I get a chance to introduce him that night. But at any rate, again. Maybe I get a chance to introduce him that night. But at any rate, March 25th at the G-PAC would be a good show. And just keep your eyes peeled. I think there's already a publication of a list of some other entertainers who are coming, so encourage you to come out when you can and support our G-PAC and all things related, and come to the downtown area. All right, so it's not 6:30 yet, folks, so at any rate, I think I'm finished with my reports. Is there anything else for the, let's see, I need to recognize a manager or the assistant managers for any comments? No? Sure? I'm not trying to extend this thing. Okay, so, all right.
Sure.
All right. Well, by my calculation, we have covered all of the agenda items. Mr. Singleton, maybe you can make a note of that, you're the longest-serving member, but this may set a new record. I'm not sure, but.
Pretty darn close. I think we've done a 30-minute one before, or 35, but this is, under 30 minutes is pretty strong.
Okay.
Now, you may remember, you and Ms. Behringer may remember that when we had NCA term on Mondays, you know, and when it was 7:00, 7:30, we would try to.
Speed it along.
Ridiculate. That was one of your public hearings. They were the quietest public hearings you've ever heard.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
But they weren't, they weren't done in 28 minutes, I can tell you that.
Yeah, that's right. And we started two minutes late, I believe.
Started two minutes late, yeah.
So at any rate.
Okay, we're 26 minutes in.
All right, all right, enough of that. But thank you all. Thank you very much. And, Mr. Munoz, and I also.
We'll make it up when we have budget meetings, I'm afraid.
Sure we will, yes. Okay, a motion is in order to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Declare this meeting of the Garner Town Council to be adjourned.
Clock starts to.
To meet again.